Good evening and welcome to tonight's Undunted, bringing into the news on George stories. I am Oy Ogbala, let's begin. In a stirring address, President Sako of the Amazonian government rallied his people with a call to action. Not just action, unity and determination. The first town hall meeting in 2025, held on Saturday, February 22nd. And it was a resounding success, as President Samuel Ikomesako's speech was met with enthusiasm and conviction. A few things must be remembered from the speech, because of how energetic they sounded. At first it says, "We must stand firm against our enemy, a common enemy, the occupier." President Sako emphasized, "We must not be swayed by internal conflict or personal interest." Or, "Our struggle is not about personality, but about liberty," emerging those words. The president drew inspiration from the bravery of Amazonian fighters, who have endured hunger, betrayal and hardship in their quest for freedom. He also highlighted the importance of diplomatic efforts and international support in their Amazonian struggle for independence. "Amazonians will not be deterred by external forces," President Sako declared. He went on to highlight that, "We will continue to push for our right to self-determination and we will take control of our destiny." Who says that? Only a wise man. Well, the speech was met with thunderous applause afterwards, as Amazonians from all walks of life gathered to show their support for their president and their struggle for independence. Aside all of the applause, there are key highlights of the president's speech. The emphasis on unity and determination in the face of adversity, a call to action against the common enemy, the occupier, the importance of diplomatic efforts and international support, and of course, retaliation, retaliation of their right to self-determination and control of Amazonians' own destiny. The Amazonian government is set to launch the 2025 draft, which will start from the 8th of March. And this year, the president highlighted that it will be dedicated to the women fighting for Amazonia and those that have endured the pain. Well, this development is expected to be a significant milestone in the Amazonian quest for independence. Well, all these and more will look into tonight's Undunted, with our in-house analyst barista team, Bixier, who is already on the other side. But first, let's get the prime headlines. On tonight's Undunted, we start with a report of a notorious individual who exploited the security situation in Bamenda to arrest and extract money from civilians. And he was of course eliminated on Sunday. A student of government technical high school, GTS Manfeh, has drowned in River Mayu. There is an urgent appeal for community support, a help of one who is about to lose his life. Also tonight, we'll take a look at the crisis in Peen, where six people have lost their lives due to a colonial military attack. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing the President Samuel Ikomesako's address, where the key issues in the town hall will be emphasized. All the Africans seen in Sudan's military advances breaks the RSF siege of the key city. And also, Trump's administration is threatening to withhold federal funding from Maine over transgender athletes policy. Well, that's a very interesting report that you should not miss. Let's get into the full briefings of Undunted after this short break. Well, at least six people have died in Peen village after armed men in colonial military uniform attacked. Witnesses say that the attackers targeted individuals and shot them at close range. These violence comes just days after residents protested against armed groups in the area, calling two men "deplague" as Amazonian fighters. And so, the report says that when residents of the Peen clan captured, beat up and burned to death, two men, they termed "Amazonian fighters" a few days ago, claiming they were the reason for the atrocities going on in the clan. One would have thought they were working in partnership with the colonial military force, right? Now, things have turned, SAA and the same colonial military men, who claimed to protect the citizens, have once again brutally terminated the lives of at least six individuals. Peen villages in shock after a terrible, a very terrible attack happened. And this is not the first on this particular case, as it is not an isolated, an isolated event in Peen. Well, Peen village is in shock after this terrible attack that has left six people dead. And eyewitnesses described a frightening scene as armed men, dressed in colonial military clothing, stormed the village, choosing specific residents to shoot at without warning. Well, the attack follows a recent protest where villagers showed their anger against armed groups by burning two suspected Amazonian fighters. Alright, and of course, we will get the thoughts of our in-house analyst, barista team, Bixier, who would definitely do justice to this topic, because he was here last week where we talked about Peen and all of the issues that has been affecting Peen lately. As of now, the reason for these heinous acts committed by the colonial army remains unknown. And so, we do not have a stronghold right now what to say. Oh, it's because of these, probably they found, as usual, the excuses they would give, they found the ASA or they found Amazonian fighters, residing there, or one thing or the other, no, no excuses or no reasons yet. But, I mean, lives are being lost. And that is what Amazonians will not support, the loss of lives on a regular basis, regardless of the city, regardless of the county. Right, Sam Bixier? You're welcome to this week on Undunted, as of today. These are the sad reports already coming in from the home front. And I'm sure that you're not delighted at this report. But then, what were your thoughts?
Well, thank you for having me once more. You see, what we're having as a report, coming in today from Peen, has become the normal, not the abnormal. Normal in what? Normal in what we call in law, extrajudicial killing. Killing of people who are going through the legal process. One would imagine that those people who are accused, allegedly accused of being Amber fighters, were committing some crime somewhere on the books, on the criminal records of Cameroon. If they were, how do we get them killed? We want to kill them in their sleep? Or we arrest them and take them for trial, sentencing, and everything that goes with a formal trial? Again, this is extrajudicial killing, which at the very least, should not be authorized in any civilized society. So, if this people committed any crime, call it belonging to Amber fighters. Was the solution, go and execute them on that trial? Certainly not. Those who did that might be heroes, and even got good promotions from the colonial regime in Yarounde. But that manifests the illegal. Because these people were not caught fighting, they were killed, they were not killed on the battlefield. They were killed somewhere in their sleep, they were killed somewhere in their private homes. And so, you cannot say these were fighters and just summarily executed them. This has become the normal asset, because this is just Peen. But there are many other places where I've seen this entity repeated itself. And repeated itself with impunity. Repeated itself in the face of the world, which has become purely unlookers to the crimes being perpetrated by a government, so-called a government in the country called Cameroon. As a matter of law, these people themselves should face justice for taking the law into their own hands. There's a reason why there's a court created, there's a reason why there are police gendarmes to do investigations, there's a reason why lawyers exist to prosecute and defend whoever is before the court. Once you don't respect this procedure, you are a criminal, you are just a murderer. Because whatever thing you call those people, they are not alive to give their ambition of a story. They are dead, they're put on top. So, what if you're just your enemies for not giving you a beer? What if you're just your enemies for falling out with your over a woman or over some social activities? Where is the ambition of the story? We don't have it. And can we always allow this to happen? No, no, this is a maximum of lawlessness. And again, I've said all the time, the crown is all happening in Bamenda. In Bamenda, where by the official terminations of Yarounde, normalcy has returned. If normalcy has returned, and these people have returned to their homes, presumably in court under normalcy, what is the reason for hunting them and killing them? Not one, not two, maybe three, six. These are the official figures. And who was wounded, who will die tomorrow, who will die the next hour? It is unacceptable, this is massacre, it should fall within the war crime definition that should trace charges before the eyes to see. That is a simple way of it. Over to you.
Alright, thank you so much for that. But you know how information comes? This is just the beginning of the week, so we are certain that before the middle of the week or towards the end of the week, we'll definitely get all of this detail, so that we can put two and two together and analyze on how all of this is great. But moving forward, there was a town hall meeting on Saturday, and I'm sure that if everything that the president said on Saturday, if it is squarely adhered to, probably some of these incidents would not be happening. So, on Saturday, February 22nd, President Samuel Ikomesako of the Federal Republic of Amazonia gave his speech. And in the speech, he addressed various concerns and challenges facing the Amazonian people. During the first town hall meeting, which was held on Saturday, the meeting was marked by a speech from President Sako, followed by a question and answer section. So, the speech was from President Sako and it was followed by a question and answer session. Well, first of all, he talked about unity and determination, where the president emphasized the importance of unity and determination in the face of adversity. In that part, he stressed that the common enemy is the occupier. And he encouraged Amazonians to take inspiration from the brave ASA who endured a warlock trying to, you know, save, fight and protect the people that just won. And of course, he emphasized that they are without salaries. In leadership and diplomacy, President Sako also addressed leadership and diplomacy issues, stating that leaders must think outside the box, that leaders must think critically and make informed decisions. He emphasized that the movement is not about personality, but about liberty, and that volunteers do not need to be nice, but rather good people. Let's get a clip about that.
A house divided against itself cannot stand. And scripture teaches us that. If you are sponsoring, encouraging or promoting any form of division, you are actively sponsoring our collapse. Be ready to take responsibility if that happens. We are already this small amongst the mixed multitude, amidst the mixed multitude that started chanting until we reach Boya in 2016. How does division make us stronger? Now, if your actions slow down or weaken our struggle, then you are working against Amazonia, whether intentionally or unintentionally. If your actions help to collapse the struggle as we know it today, Amazonia will not forgive us. Because despite the fact that we had good intentions, think and think through before you take any stance. Share your moves with people that can give you a balanced perspective before you conclude. Leaders cannot afford to act only with one side of their brains. A leader's mistake is a leading mistake. If I make a mistake today, God forbid, don't you know I can drag the whole of this house into error?
Oh well, that's not all. Of course, you know, the president, he also acknowledged the unique struggles of Amazonians generally. And he made mention of the influence of the French interests in Cameroon and the African Union. He emphasized the importance of perseverance and unity in the face of all of these challenges and atrocities. And so, during the meeting, President made several key announcements, which includes the 2025 draft. And so, he emphasized that the 2025 draft will be launched on the 8th of March and it will be dedicated to, in his words, the mamas who are fighting and who are enduring the Amazonian fight. But in diplomacy, especially when it came to questions asked, he emphasized that Amazonians will not engage in efforts, but only if those efforts favor the Amazonian people. And making reference to the sufferance of their people presently because of the bad decision made by Amazonians forefathers, you know? He made that extensive, he made that extensive remark because of the questions that was asked. Let's get that video excerpt.
I use this opportunity to call back everyone who is weak and weary. Everyone who has resigned to come back, because Amazonia is not yet free. There's no better place than this government to serve your country. You just have to find the grace and willingness to make an effort to make it work here. Dear Amazonia financial warriors, it will be launched in 2025, this 2025, on the March 8th. This year's draft is dedicated to the women of Amazonia, the Mama Amazonia. Those who bury their husbands and our fathers and our children, defend for our orphans in the midst of bullets and suffering, they dig with bare hands in desperation, yet never lose hope, we honor you people. For some of us, we will fully draft and pay before March 8th, because as someone here said, one said, "Talk is cheap." If you are still in this struggle, actions speak louder than words. Let us answer not with empty speeches, not with complaints, not with insults and counter insults, not with just prayer, but with action. If you still believe in Amazonia, then support its struggle, support us. If you want to see our comrades in jail released sooner than later, support us. Donate to this government. If you want diplomacy to be taken to a whole new level, support us. Donate to this government. If you want operations on the ground to intensify, donate to this government, unless you have given up on Amazonia. And there is no excuse. As for me and my family, we will drop $500 after this meeting to begin our draft in honor of Mama Amber of Amazonia. This year's draft is the pre-transition draft, which we call the Operation Countdown. We are making inroads into the prosecutorial domain and diplomatic circles of this struggle. And with international organizations and support, we are geared to address the critical levels moving our struggle on the ground, the home front. And Amazonia shall be free, not if, because we will make it so. They cry out for unity, focus and victory. Stay strong, stay united. Long live the government of the Southern Camarons and Amazonia. And long live our Amazonian state armed forces and short live this ugly struggle.
Well, another key interest for people, especially those in diaspora, was on the perspective of international support. As President Sako said, his perspective on how the word views Amazonia and the liberation war, stating that the word sees Amazonia as a conquered people who have been marginalized and the people have been there for years. So, he emphasized that the right to self-determination is set in immediately and that the injustice will only be corrected when Amazonians reach Boya. Because like he said, the people think that, why should Amazonians care about independence now when they have been under that same marginalization for over 60 years? So, he says that's how the word sees Amazonia. How do you see Amazonia? You yourself, listening, that's quite important. So, while you're trying to answer that, we must also say here that President Sako's speech and their subsequent question and answer session demonstrated his commitment to addressing, you know, the challenges facing the Amazonian people. And most importantly, his determination to lead the government towards liberation, liberty and self-determination, not just that. President Sako's speech is one of their resilience, determination and unity in the face of adversity. He focused on that. And so, that's why he emphasized the importance of prioritizing liberty over personality and pursuing diplomatic efforts that favors the Amazonian people. And so, the speech was in total a rallying cry for Amazonians to remain committed to their cause and to work towards achieving self-determination and freedom. Well, towards the ending part, Baristan Bixier, I'm sure you were also part of the, you know, town hall meeting. He said, "Oh, those who do not support Amazonians at this point can actually take a walk. And when you take your walk, do it gently, do not cause mayhem. That it's not compulsory to support Amazonians if you're tired." Yeah, I remember those words, "If you're tired, you no longer want to support Amazonians. Just take a peaceful walk and go, not causing chaos." You know, those were his words. And he said those words in the most gentle tone ever. You can detect if he was sad, you can dictate if he was angry, but he was just saying what he felt and what he wants to say in the most calm or coolest way ever. What were your thoughts exactly on the president's speech? I'm just giving mine, let's hear your thoughts, please.
Well, I think I was there the whole time, I listened to whatever I listened to. And the conclusions I've come to, might not be the same for other people. But this is what I think it is all about. We're in year eight or year nine of the struggle, 2025. And we cannot deny that we had problems, we've been quarreling left and right, we've been arguing about money, about book. And the summary is, he said, "This struggle is not about personalities." That is a big one. Personalities include educated people with PhDs, not about them. Include the millionaires, it's not about them. Includes the village farmer, the ordinary woman who goes to say things they are not in the market. It's not about you, it is about everything put together. Because all your money, if you're a video player, a loan will not liberate Amazonia. All your book, PhD holder, whatever thing you do, it's not going to liberate Amazonia. It's a work of collective effort to solve the problem. Because the problem is a national problem. You know, if you're going to bring down beer, if you go and create beer, the regime, someone will replace him. If you take a tank, somebody will become another minister. So, about, the cost is more than an individual. And so, most of the disagreements that we've had, that have led to quarrels and some people downing their tools, have been on a personal basis. They insulted me, someone will say, they call me names, said I'm uneducated, others will say. That we stole money, some will say. There is no human society where the vice is done a waste. Even organized society, even tomorrow in Amazonia, they're going to have thieves. They're going to have criminals, they're going to have people who insult one another. That by itself should not bring down the system. The important thing is, they belong to the system. And this particular instance, we are fighting a war, and it's a central war of survivor, which survivor does not depend on you alone, but it depends on all of us. And so, if you have this lesson, talk to us again and again. That will disappear the fear, the frustration of others, who might have downed their tools because of one of these reasons. They insulted me, they didn't listen to me, they didn't do this. That would change a lot of things. And then, of course, he says, he ends it up with a Q and A. Q and A is a personal issue, because people come out, ask personal questions, what they feel in their minds. They might be asking questions that are related to the revolution, but that is their feeling, which sometimes they arrive, sometimes they arrive wrong. And so, when you put those things together and put down the answers that followed, that is a big job. And then, of course, you ended up with a draft. Yes, people have drafted before, there were allegations of theft and so on and so on, of draft, of mismanagement, that is a fact, we need to know that fact. But is that the reason why you should no longer draft? No, no. If a thief breaks into your house and takes your bank books, they were even what, how much cash? Would that prevent you from going to work, remove your money? Certainly not. You go back to work and replace the money that was stolen. If a man broke your house, for whatever reason, or fire, a young man, then devastates your house. What is left is the foundation. Are you going to abandon Benbi? Are you going to abandon Manfeh, wherever the house was? Because the enemy destroyed this house. No, you have to rebuild, you have to start somewhere, rebuild and make sure that you build a better house, which will not be destroyed, which if fire comes, will not consume it as it consumes the gram house, the karbo house, as we call it. And so, I think that is a mark of leadership. A leadership, a genuine leadership is the one that understands the people and requires, brings back the people to the forefront by explaining what is better. Yes, he said everything, including diplomacy. I was addressing somewhere, somewhere else today, somewhere else. People have been away for a long time, "Oh, there's been no diplomacy." No, you can come on board, I'm not sure where you come on board. You are not coming to start a war, something has been done. The Apple, who said, "Well, since 2018, 2016 were not from the war." No, no sir, we are coming back, you're never going to start fighting the war. You're going to continue from where others have ended. Maybe by death or by withdrawal, but they have done something before you come in. So, you're not coming to reinvent the revolution and start it in 2016. You're coming to complete what others have done. You're coming to fix what others might have failed. You're not coming to do something completely new. And so, that's what the president is saying. President Sako is not the first president, there are other presidents before him, they are all leaders. So, he did not claim, he has not claimed, never, to have been the only one. He came to continue where some people have ended and possibly to redefine the errors that they made, even make some, to show the error is human. That's exactly what happened. And so, I hear that his speech so strongly, I think it was to the point, it was for people to change their minds. Because anger alone is never the solution, problem. Insults are not enough, because there will always be insults anywhere, everywhere in the house. The father, your child insults you, your wife insults you, your husband insults you. There is not any... is not enough to end a marriage, that is not enough for you to leave the house and go and sleep outside. Because the risk, you risk, you take, sleeping in the street because someone has insulted you, take mostly children, it's more than the one that you come back home and go back and lie in your bed and reflect why you went out of control. That, in a sense, is what the President was saying, or at least in the sense, what I gathered from his town hall, which lasted for a long time, that's what I gathered from his Q and A, and so on and so forth, which brought so many questions. Somebody asked that the revolution has been hijacked. And the question was, who has hijacked what? Has been hijacked, if you hijacked the revolution, then it's no longer there. It is no longer there, then there's no need for war. So who hijacked what is the answer? Nobody hijacked anything, everybody came in to do something, nobody prepared for war. And perhaps in the course of the incident, yes, the person made a mistake and perhaps was taken out by death or withdrawal or something, but that did not end the revolution. The enemy is facing the same things. If the revolution was a walk in the streets, they would have since declared victory. You've not done it, not because they don't want to do it, but because there is no victory for them to declare. And so we should be happy that we are here because by every standard of measurement, in terms of money, we don't have one hundredth of your money, in terms of the population, we don't have one thousandth of your population, in terms of diplomacy, we don't have one hundredth, we will be able to resist them up to this point, to show that, as the priest of conference, small that be sick, we are small, we were not sick. Over to you.
All right. All right, thank you so much, Baristan Basyir. Tomorrow, we might also take a look at these, but for now, I love how you ended that particular analysis. And so reports coming in from Manu, Manfe, says that a Manfe student of the government technical high school has drowned in River Manu. Well, sources have confirmed the incident occurred on Saturday when their student, along with two others, escaped from school to go swimming. While the other two students returned home safely, the third student went missing. The river Manu, like we got a report, is in Manfe, the chief town of Manu County of the Midland Zone of the Federal Republic of Amazonia. So just efforts have launched early Saturday morning by drivers in Abakor Village, but so far, the body of the missing student has not been found. One of the drivers expressed concerns that the incident may have spiritual undertones, suggesting that the family of the missing student should meet the chiefs of Abakor Village to perform sacrifices to retrieve the body. And so local sources have raised concerns as well about the frequency of students escaping from school to swim in the river, with some even cooking and consuming food and drinks in the river air. So the failing standards of education in Amazonia and judges that, of course, everything is falling at this point, is also a result of the infringement of La Republic de Cameron into the Anglo-Saxon system of education. So, but I was trying to gather if this incident happened during school or after school, you know, but be that as it may, student leaving school is so scary, or student rather than going home, whatever the case may be, going to the river when it's not a Saturday or Sunday when the parents are not aware, you know, is actually a very dazed situation. But let me hear your thoughts as a native of, you know, the Amazonian culture. Do you think that this could be spiritual in any way? Do you really think that what are eight people or probably the student couldn't swim and just drown, knowing that it might just be a flowing stream or river or what it may be?
No, no, I don't think there is anything spiritual there. See, this spirituality thing we claim all the time in Africa is not always true. To me, it's all nonsense. People in Manfe, you see that big river there? And the students have an interest in swimming, these are students, swimming is a sport. One would imagine that children going to Manfe, went to school in Manfe, should be interested in swimming. I need an interest in swimming, swimming should be taught, basic swimming should be taught in those schools that surround that big river. Because the children will go there consciously or unconsciously, and they should go to save themselves. If you don't get drowned, crocodile will kill you. And so why are they not being given these lessons? It's a failure of the system. They are just a river there. Take other bigger towns, Duala, for example, in Cameroon, Limbe, I mean, children going to school in Limbe, which is at this ocean side, are taught basic lessons in swimming, that if they, for whatever reason, they will rush there, at least to see the fish swim around. Why they not been taught these basic things? It's a failure of our education system. Because come from the Northcom, when a student going to school near the river, near the ocean, who want to see how the ocean works, they will develop interest in all that. And once they are able to develop interest in all that, it requires that the system should develop that and train them, give them basic lessons in swimming. So that in addition to exercising themselves, having the spot of swimming, they should go to save their lives, even a bee, if they got into that place and they were being hunted by a crocodile or a shark, they should go to escape. This is not being done. And when anything happens, it begin to be tough, that's spirituality, no, I don't believe in that. But on another side, if we look at that river there, it's a very big river, that's what they call the Cross River, in those days, which we later call Man River. That Man River had a river port, ships used to anchor there. Manfe was a seaport in doing this. If it had been a seaport, that place should have been so developed, due to its security, it had everything there that would not allow children to come from the bush and just jump the river and drown. And so that is part of our dilemma. Where has the Manfe seaport gone? Because a seaport comes with a lot of things. It comes with a lot of things, including protection and security. Two things are absent, they have been destroyed, they were there. And so that's the larger lesson that we should learn from it. As I said, it's very difficult for a child to get down, for example, in Limbe, because you have houses standing there at the bush. By then, you go there, your friend will see you and bring you back. And so in Manfe, which has been totally abandoned, we don't know how the child found himself or herself, he get drowned. And the next excuses that were witchcraft, the government would say, we're investigating. Why are they investigating? That he got there and got drowned. They went to question the shark, the crocodile, whatever things swallowed you in the ocean, they will not do it. And so again, that's a failure of the education system in general and the failure of the people around them. They may believe in witchcraft, but the question you should ask is, why? Why only this child? The witches are for him or for her? No, let our people take responsibility, and I'm sure in the future, Amazonia will take responsibility to develop those places. If it means only putting protective fences nearest where the children can just try and go in, who do it? Since you have to go through, you have to pass through a particular path where somebody will be there to guide you and so on and so forth. That's what it takes to secure people from such hazards, which sometimes they call them natural, because if you didn't jump into yourself, if you jump in, if you stray at the corner, a shark can take you off, a crocodile can take you. And so we will develop two things, considering where they are, the population that lives around it, and the technical know-how that we can use to prevent such hazards from happening anytime. Over to you.
All right, thank you so much. And really, generally, it's just some of some schools, you know, actually have all of that as part of their extracurricular activities, but like you said, it should be part of their studies, but then it's not. But while we will take a walk away from those who are dying or from the dead, let's go into someone who is struggling to live. And so in the Midland Zone of Momo, Tenno Kinsley Njo, who is a young man who he is from the Batibo, recently shared his heartfelt story in a video revealing his struggles, but five years after a devastating accident has left him paralyzed with severe injuries. His family, his mom, is now reaching out to community for help in securing the medical care he urgently needs. Well, Kinsley's life changed dramatically on the twenty sixth of July, twenty twenty, when he was involved in a serious accident. While in his video, he explained how incidents resulted in an iron implant in his back. Let's just take a view of it and we'll proceed with the rest of the reports.
Kinsley, I mean them, Papa Padem, as Allah owna. My name is Tenno Kinsley, I be picking for Si Ben Batibo. Me, I've been a mechanic and I work with Camion, where I be conductor. Now we were in for this good day where we come out in Angera, where we come from Bamenda, every day orange. Now twenty sixth July, I get injury. I don't struggle for a long time with my mommy. I don't suffer many times, I beg, my mommy just say a lot of attire. I beg, I need a help, even if he assist, I just saw iron in there from my back where
So with the iron?
Iron there from my back. Iron there from my back.
Back from my iron that.
Iron that. I don't see for hospital too. Since we that time, we get the accident, they put monte o cara for car and go hospital. Now it's just born I'm so, it's just born I'm so, because my waist be done paralyzed. And since then too, over life, I get wound upon wound. Wound upon wound, wound upon wound, wound upon wound, so. So I beg, if my feet hurt me, I will be appreciate. And my mom this, me and iron is suffer, and they so repower, I don't really shot.
You don't get the accident for how many years, Maso?
That is twenty sixth July, Sunday, twenty twenty.
Don't make five years. Don't make five years.
Yeah.
No worry, I come, I tell you, I travel from Sarwe to Carri, so long here now.
Yes.
I tell you, say the God, where don't they help others? He don't already help you.
Amen.
Now just say me, believe, you get me?
Amen.
And just believe, say.
Oh, well, very sad. As you saw in the video, a very large car is visible on the victim's right leg. He explained that. Now, due to his paralysis, he also suffered burns on the legs from a motorbike's exhaust pipe, as he couldn't find his balance when he was placed on it to be transported to the hospital. Since that day, according to Kinsley, he has faced numerous challenges, spending almost all of his time in bed. Well, this prolonged inactivity led to the development of severe wounds. That, while his healing, still requires proper medical attention. You saw those wounds, they are quite scary, even opened. You saw his mother sitting by his side, right? Well, he has also said his mother, who has been his devoted caretaker, expressed had the concern for her son's health. While in the video, she can be seen making a heartfelt plea for assistance, asking for the community for support, so that her son can receive the treatment he desperately needs at the hospital. Meanwhile, the family, they are hopeful with the kindness and generosity of others like you and I, the much support needed funds can be raised for Kinsley's care. So we're going to place on the screen the details where you can reach him directly for support. Of course, you know, the name is Tenno Kinsley Njo, that's T E N O, Kinsley, then Njo, N J O H. And the memo number is the MTN Momo, the number is plus two, three, seven, six, seven, eight, six, four, three, zero, one, seven, plus two, three, seven, six, seven, eight, six, four, three, zero, one, seven. This contact was given and confirmed by Kinsley himself, as we can hear clearly from the audio and from the video. So that's his direct number. You want to call for assistance, you want to help this young man who is ready to survive, you want to help him? Well, all you need to do is to help call that number. Oh, well, Baristan Basyir, you would want to say a thing or two to support, to support Mr. Kinsley?
Yes, I think it is sorrowful, it's pathetic to see a young man like that, very high in spirit, because he's able to talk, he's able to explain his cause. Luckily, he's talking to us, Amazonians that we are, who are full of sympathy. He needs money, a lot of money, sometimes back home, but not much money if we put our resources together. We are very, very rich, not in financial, in cash, no, we are very rich in resources. One of us, watching that film, might be an expert in those things and help this guy, directly, directly or direct him where to go. I can even venture to say, he might be lucky, that one of us, help him get even an evacuation to a better place to treat himself. That is impossible. And so I can only add to say that good, now the information is out, but I would rather add that let us publicize this thing as often as possible, because not everybody is watching us now. And then hopefully somehow we come, he's very, very resilient, he's still very, very high in spirit, many poor at that stage would probably be dead. But I think we should be encouraging, we should not think that the widows might is small, but they still have only money, give what will come. A euro in European currency is much money back home. And this will happen by a bandage, by something, if that is what is needed. And again, and again, I call on our people, the expertise, American doctors in the area, with that specialty, with foreign extensions to help. If it's possible, locate somewhere where you can get help, either by supplying him the material he needs, the equipment, if you like, accessible, or evacuating, if that is necessary. We have all these resources with us. And I want to add my voice to say, let us do something, one way or the other, to help this young man, to help a desperate person, is to help a million living people. Over to you.
All right, Baristan Basyir, it's on the side notes that we know owed in tonight's discussion with you. And yes, tomorrow is another day on Undunted, and we hope that by tomorrow, you know, a whole lot of Amazonians would have responded to the young man, Mr. Kinsley. Like you said, he's still full of life and he has hope of getting better. So let everyone who can reach out to him and support in the best way that he can. Thank you so much, Baristan Basyir, for being part of tonight's Undunted.
Thank you for having me.
What coming up right after this break is the news across the globe and Africa. Well, Sudan's military advances. Sudan's military has broken a year-long siege on their strategic city of Obaid, restoring access to a vital area in the south-central region and securing crucial supply routes in its ongoing war against the paramilitary Rapid Support Forces, the RSF. Well, officials said on Sunday that military spokesperson Brigado General Nabil Abdullar announced that government forces also expelled the RSF fighters from their last stronghold in White Nile Province, marking another significant setback for the paramilitary group. The conflict erupted in April twenty twenty-three, when tensions between the military and the RSF escalated into full-scale warfare. The fight has devastated the capital, the country, and other urban areas, with wide with widespread reports of war crimes, including mass rapes and ethnically motivated killings, particularly in the Daffour region. Well, according to the United Nations and International Rights Organization, Abdullah stated that military units in the El Said Aqsi successfully reopened access to the Obaid, the capital of North Kadofan Province, the city, which houses a major airbase and the military's fifth infantry division. While it had been under the RSF siege since the conflict began. A key commercial and transportation hub, Obaid sits on a railway connecting Khachem to Yala, the capital of South Daffour Province. Finance Minister Gebreel Emanuel hailed the military's success as a massive step towards lifting the RSF siege on El Fasho, the capital of North Daffor, and enabling humanitarian aid delivery to the Kadofan. Sunday's development follows a series of RSF defeats in September, when the military launched an offensive to reclaim the great Khachem area. While government forces have since secured key locations, including their own headquarters, and are now close to recapturing the Republican Palace, which RSF fighters stormed in the early hours of the conflict in an attempt to kill military Chief General Abdul Fattal Bouhan. Elsewhere, the RSF has suffered losses, including the strategic city of Wad Madani, the city of Giza province. The military has also regained control of Sudan's largest oil refinery. With these recent advances, Sudan's military appears to hold the upper hand in a war that is nearing its second anniversary with no political resolution in sight. So international mediation efforts and US pressure, including a genocide assessment against the RSF, have no far failed to end the conflict. Meanwhile, the RSF and its allies have signed a charter to establish a parallel government, raising fear of a potential national split. But then, in a separate crisis, cholera has spread to Rabak, the capital of White Nile Province. Health authorities confirmed the outbreak, which began in Kotsi. It has claimed sixty-eight lives between Thursday and Sunday, with more than 1,860 diagnosed cases. The provincial health ministry attributed the outbreak to contaminated drinking water, following an RSF attack that damaged the Kotsi main water supply facilities. Authorities have since repaired the facility and launched an anti-cholera vaccination campaign, reaching sixty-seven percent of the targeted population within two days. Cholera, a highly contagious disease causing severe dehydration, can be fatal without immediate treatments, according to World Health Organization. Sudan has a history of deadly cholera outbreaks with more than 600 deaths and 21,000 cases recorded between July and October 2024, mostly among displaced populations in the country's eastern region. As both the military, conflicts, and humanitarian crises persist, Sudan remains mirrored in turmoil with no clear path to stability. The edited version closely matched the original content. So the system flagged it as unchanged. Could you specify any particular changes you would like in this? Anyways, coming up next is news across the globe. While in a move that has sparked widespread controversy, the Trump's administration has warned states of Maine that it will withhold federal funding unless it complies with its policy on transgender athletes participating in women's sports. Let's get that.
Many Democrats are fighting me on that. I hope you continue, because you'll never win another race. The NCAA has complied immediately, by the way, that's good. But I understand Maine, is Maine here, the governor of Maine? Are you not gonna comply with it?
I'm complying with state federal laws.
Well, we are the federal law. Well, you better do it. You better do it, because you're not gonna get any federal funding at all if you don't. And by the way, your population, even though it's somewhat liberal, although I did very well there, your population doesn't want men playing in women's sports. So you better comply, because otherwise you're not getting any federal funding. Every state, good, I'll see you in court, I look forward to that. That should be a real easy one. And enjoy your life after governor, because I don't think you'll be in elected politics.
Oh, well, that one-on-one conversation there. Well, according to sources, President Trump has been vocal about his opposition to allowing transgender athletes to compete in women's sports, citing concerns about fairness and equality, which is what it's supposed to be. Their administration's policy, which has been met with resistance from severe states, including Maine, just as we have seen, has been criticized for promoting discrimination amongst and against transgender individuals and the undermining of their rights. Maine's governor has been a vocal opponent of the Trump's administration's policy, arguing that it is discriminatory and goes against the state's values of inclusivity and equality. The governor has vowed to continue fighting against a policy set on the stage for a contentious battle over federal funding. The Trump's administration's threat to withhold federal funding from Maine has backed outreach among civil rights groups and advocates for transgender rights, who argue that the policy is a clear example of the administration's ongoing efforts to roll back protections for marginalized communities. You would want to ask, how are they marginalized? But then, since the situation will continue to unfold, it remains to be seen how Maine and other states will respond to the Trump's administration's threat. One thing is clear, however, the fight over transgender rights and women's sports is. Trump is not going back on his words. Oh, well, meanwhile, in another move, the BRICS nations, which comprises of Brazil, Russia, India, China, and South Africa, are actively exploring alternative payment platforms to reduce their dependence on American financial systems. Well, according to Russian Foreign Minister Sergei Laruev, their initiative was originally pushed by President President Louis Inarchio Lular de Silva. This is being discussed in BRICS anyways, and the initiative of the President President Louis Inarchio Lular de Silva. The previous summit had a discussion and decision on the necessity of developing a proposal on alternative payment platform through finance ministries and central banks. The BRICS nations are motivated to create a more independent financial system by parsing the US dollar and Euro-dominated Western currency lines. This move could potentially threaten the dominance of the US dollar in global trade. But for today, the key developments so far is that BRICS Bridge Payment Platform is set to open, the BRICS Pay is trying to be created, and the gold-backed currency is going to be on soon. And so these developments demonstrate the BRICS nation's commitment to creating a more independent and self-sufficient financial system, potentially reshaping the global economic landscape. That is what they believe. Remembering our last reports on the BRICS, we did tell you that Donald Trump is not gonna have it easy with these countries based on the de-dollarization issues. Will they succeed? Oh, well, we'll see that in the coming days. But that's all we have for you on tonight's Undunted. But before we go, let's take a look at the major stories. Well, tonight on Undunted, we told you a report of a notorious individual who exploited the security situation in Bamenda to harass and extort money from civilians, while he was eliminated on Sunday. While a student of government technical high school, Manfe, has drowned in River Manu. Also tonight, we sought for rescue and soccer for Mr. Kinsley Njo. We took a report from the Pien community, where six persons have lost their lives to colonial military. Also today, we analyzed President Samuel Combs' speech during the town hall meeting. All the Africans saying, we took a walk to Sudan and the RSF siege, while President Trump has threatened to withhold federal funding for Maine over transgender athlete policy. That is a forty-nine, so don't said. Bring into the news on your stories. Sincerest apologies for coming behind shadow tonight. Well, we'll leave you with ABC Amber Images. Good night and God bless.